Call a meeting order. We're in the city council chambers at 10 West State Street in Marshalltown, Iowa. It's May 11th at 5:30 PM. Are we reading that?
Would you like me to read it?
A notice.
Mm-hmm. Yes. The mayor and city council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone or your phone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit the time used to present your remarks, three minutes or less, in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council, and not to any councilor specifically. Is that the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or do have staff respond during the meeting?
If I could stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
On the mayor, council, and administrative comments, I'd like to start with, last week was the city clerks' week, and elected to recognize Sherri Cookenauer as our city clerk, who does a fantastic job.
Well, thank you.
And this, this week is National Police Week. We have an outstanding department here in Marshalltown that is, is very good, so I'd like to recognize them, too. Consent agenda, probably need a motion to approve it.
Your honor, before, may we remove three items? I'd like to remove number seven, number 10, and number 11.
Okay.
And also, like to make two comments. It's my understanding, we're going, one of the, one of them on the agenda is the Civil Service Commission reappointing Paul Peglow, but there's also an opening still on that commission, so if anybody in the public is interested, they should contact the mayor's office. And also, the people looking at, the consent agenda, looking at it on line number four, the annual, Fire Department Annual Report, everything did not come through, but Jessica, you said it, the complete one is on the website, that people can see what's missing, right?
Yes, the fire chief is going to be posting that on the Fire Department webpage.
Okay. Thank you, your honor. Thanks, Jessica.
So with those items removed, I need to make a motion to approve the consent.
I move to move, move to approve.
Second.
Okay. You want to call roll, please?
Martin?
Here. Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Yeah, three of those.
Sure, we might move being items number seven, ten, and eleven. Approve the minutes of April 27th, and the bill list of $1,256,693.12. Reappoint Paul Peglow to the Civil Service Commission. Recede the building permit report for April. Recede the Fire Department Annual Report. Resolution approving quote and award to NutraJect Systems for the cleaning and disposal of biosolids for the Digestive Number One Cleaning Project, $56,000. Resolution declaring certain property surplus, and authorizing sale and disposal of a 1997 Kawasaki Mule. Resolution supporting a federal build grant application for the Highway 14 North Third Avenue reconstruction. Resolution accepting coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program, Formula Grant award in the amount of $60,953. Resolution approving contract change order number four for the 2017 Manhole and Point Repair Project, increase of $52,796. Resolution approving contract change order number 18 for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum Renovation Project, $25,383.57.
Okay, we'll go back to number seven, and if you can read that.
Sure. Resolution approving amended engineering services agreement for the East Merle Hibbs Road Construction Project for McClure Engineering, increase of $27,500.
Move for approval, your honor?
My second.
Okay. Your honor, the reason I ask this to be removed is, I have to believe that things are not going to be moving as swiftly as we would like for the East Merle Hibbs project, and I think we should slow down on that. Plus, we haven't resolved the connecting street issue of, is it going to be Third Avenue or Fifth Avenue, or no? And I can't see moving forward with construction, and then having to go in and tear out curbs and things to put the connector street in. I'd like to see us just put this on hold for a while, not act on this resolution, or the one coming up to, until we get the whole area figured out, what street we're going to have the connecting to Merle Hibbs, and even if we're going to go forward with that, it's hard for me to believe that McFarland Clinic is going to move forward this year with the losses they've incurred because of the COVID-19, so I'm hoping that others agree with me that we can not pass these at this time. Thank you, your honor.
Well, we have a motion and a second to, to approve this resolution. You're asking to amend it, or table it, or what's your?
I'm asking to table this. I'd move that we table this resolution at this time and bring it back when we have resolved the Fifth Avenue, Third Avenue connector, or even resolve the issue if we even need this street, if McFarland Clinic is not going to build out there for two or three years. So I would say we table this until we have more information on all, on all those issues.
So we would need a second to that tabling?
So what you're, so what you're thinking is we need a discussion on, well, I, I think Jessica's already tried to field questions about Third and Fifth Avenue, which I agree, I think we need that.
When there's a motion to table, there's no discussion to follow it.
Correct. No, no, what I meant is, it should be.
I didn't mean that we were going to discuss it now, I just said we should have that.
So is there a second to that?
I believe Weren said she seconded.
Bethany, did you second that?
Yes, sir.
We would call roll on, on his request.
It'd be roll call on the motion to table.
Correct.
Motion to table. Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
No.
Martin?
No.
Motion to table did not pass.
So now we need to, to vote on a resolution as, as presented.
Okay, so the motion was by Isom, second by Martin. This is a motion to pass the resolution as presented. Thompson?
I was going to say, before, before you vote, Justin can provide any background right now, that the motion to table has, has failed. Would you like to have Justin provide any comment on this?
Is, is he on here?
Yes, he is.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Justin, you got any comments?
Justin Nichol, Public Works Director, I mean, I don't know that I have any direct comments, would be happy to answer any questions, but this resolution provides services for the staking, to make sure that you're in the correct north, south, east, west location when we build curb and gutter, when we build streets, storm sewer, waterline, sidewalk, that's what this amended engineering services agreement is for.
Your honor, question, point of clarification, too, this, this project is proceeding without any north-south extension for Third Ave. or Fifth Ave. at this point in time, that is correct?
That is correct. The, the resolution that we'll get to is over in construction on East Merle Hibbs Project. It does not include a north-south connector in the form of Third Avenue or Fifth Avenue at this time.
Your honor, may I? And Justin, for clarification, the plan is to go as far as what was platted, that it would be, where Fifth, where Fifth Avenue was plotted to connect to it, that's as far east as Merle Hibbs would go at this time.
Yeah, that's a general good location. It, it goes to the drainage, drainage way that is roughly south, a little southeast of the Iowa River Hospice. We'll be putting in a box culvert through that drainage way as well, which sits to the east of the intersection of what would have been Fifth Avenue and East Merle Hibbs.
And Justin, or a follow-up, when we decide if and which connector street goes in, what's the incurred cost to tear up Merle Hibbs and connect it, and do all the storm sewers and everything?
So I don't anticipate that there would be any, we always build storm sewer with, at, at junctions with a, a structure that can be built into, so I don't see any problems there. And as far as the, the cross-street intersections, at this point, we don't have any developers dictating where those cross-streets would go, and it's quite common on other projects, Olive, South Ridge, the others, that you make foursome curb, and then you end up with 30, 40, 50 feet of curb coming out to make a connection. It happens in residential subdivisions where there are no homes or driveways built yet, so it's, it's certainly not out of the ordinary, in fact, it's quite ordinary for that to happen.
And would the plan be to put the circle drive at the end of it, or just dead-end it?
No, it would be a dead-end for now. There is no need for the, for the traffic circle or the roundabout at this time, until we've fleshed out the, the side-street connections.
Thank you.
Did we vote on this?
Not yet.
We haven't yet. Any other questions? Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Your honor, if I may, is there a public comment on any of these?
I can mute, unmute all phone lines, but we haven't typically been doing any comment on anything that was not a public comment at the very end, or a public hearing during this time.
Call, call roll, please.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed, 4-3.
Move down to consent agenda item number 10.
Resolution ordering construction of the East Merle Hibbs Project, setting public hearing on proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs, and directing publication of notes to bidders.
Your honor?
Okay.
Obviously, I'm not going to table this one, based on what just happened. I would just say that, again, I, I don't think we should move forward at this time, but, thank you.
So that's the only comment you have on it?
It's the only comment I think will do any good.
So we need a motion to, to approve this?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Your honor, can I, can I offer? Yeah, so the, the question of Third Avenue versus Fifth Avenue has come up. One of the things that we've stated publicly all along was that was a very divisive issue, and that we didn't want to have a public discussion of that at this point in time. That doesn't mean that East Merle Hibbs cannot move forward as a project. And so ultimately, when we're back into a situation where we can have the public join us here in council chambers, that will be a discussion item, and in talking with Justin and the engineers at McClure, that's something you can always change order in. Certainly, I would hope by the time we're able to have that discussion, that that's something where there could be a contract awarded, but you're not talking about massive amounts of work that would have been started. So there would be an option for you to, to add something in at some point, when you're able to have that discussion, but ultimately, we felt that the main part of the project could move forward without that discussion happening at this moment right now.
Your honor?
So I was going, go ahead.
But my concern about this is, we haven't got an answer for McFarland Clinic, if they're even going to build this year out there. Why are we putting a $700,000 street in to be another dead-end in town? We have LaFrenz that sat, you know, that was supposed to spur some development just south of there. Now we're going to put $700,000 of that bond issue, we're going to be paying interest on a bond for how many years before we even be, begin to see construction that will generate tax revenue for us to pay us back? That's my concern. We're, we're putting the cart before the horse now, with everything that's happening with COVID-19, and, and, and I just think we should have all our ducks in a row, have, know what the cross-streets are, know where the roundabouts are going to be, know what the development is out there, you know? I mean, I haven't heard any interest, but anybody that wants to be a neighbor to McFarland out there that's come to us, and said, hey, if McFarland's going out there, we're going out there, too. I don't see a need for this street, I never have, so, but I won't make a motion to table it, because I don't think it'll do any good. So thank you, your honor.
Is there a second to table it?
No, I didn't, no.
You didn't?
No motion.
Oh, that's, that's.
No, just vote.
All right. Can we call roll, please?
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Motion carried, 5-2. Number 11, resolution setting date for public hearing on an amendment to a development agreement with Flint Hills Holdings to increase economic development payments to an amount not to exceed $575,000.
Move for approval, your honor? Is there a second?
I second.
And, your honor?
Your discussion, yeah.
The reason I ask this to be removed is, as the previous meeting, this is a 50-unit development that was supposed to take care of some housing issues that were lost during the tornado. The delays that Flint Hills has incurred, I honestly don't see, we're going to see this open until 2023, the first residence, five years after the tornado, so it's no longer a housing issue to replace lost housing from the tornado. Now it comes down to an issue of, in my opinion, what's the best bang for the buck for $575,000? And like, I did some figuring, and like I said, we could give $11,500 to 50 homeowners, and we would generate, in the same 15 years, we'd actually generate about 3/4 of a million dollars in tax revenue over those 15 years on private homes, versus giving the $575,000 to Flint Hills, and I still don't think it's going to get built, to be honest with you. So I wanted this out of the consent agenda, because I'm against using TIF funds to give them a, basically, a 15-year tax abatement. Thank you, your honor.
Do we need to have, and I got questions for Justin, or just make your comments?
I don't have any questions. I, we, the questions I had were answered, you know, when we had, well, I'm sorry, Jessica, what was his name from?
Tony Krasnic from Flint Hills Holdings, from, was that the last meeting?
I think my que, my questions were answered two weeks ago, your honor. I just, like I said, I just don't see the, I think there's other ways we could invest that money.
So we need to call roll on this, then?
I'm, I, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any, but this was just a, the follow-up to the action that you requested from the last meeting, to move forward with extending the dollar amount of their rebate agreement.
Hearing none, can we call roll?
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 or 6-1.
So we move down to a motion?
This is a partial list of tobacco, nicotine, and vapor licenses that I have received. This is the year that we renew cigarette licenses. Licenses are in effect from July 1 through June 30, 2021, and rather than sending them all through at the last minute, I thought I would take them through as they came in, so I could get the licenses in the hands of the merchants earlier. I recommend the council approve these.
Is there a motion approved?
Move for approval, your honor?
Second.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1.
Move down to Resolution H.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Riverview Park Stormwater Pump Station retaining wall and paving project in the amount of $211,700.
Move for approval, your honor?
Second, your honor?
Does there any questions for Justin on this?
Just, was the bid favorable, your honor?
You what?
Was the bid favorable?
Justin is unmuted as well, right now.
Justin, can you answer that? The bid on this?
In, in the packet, we do have a, some supporting documentation. The engineer's estimate for this project was at about $151,000, and as you can see, the low bid was at $211,000. It's a somewhat unknown time for bidders and contractors, just as we've talked about with other items on the agenda. Based on a quote we had from last year, and the, the one bid we did receive, staff would recommend that we accept the quote, even though it is, it is greater than the engineer's estimate. With a little review, I believe the consultant engineer's estimate to be low, probably should have had a little more contingency, or, or some greater values placed to it, and so we would suggest that we still accept the bid, even though it is greater than the engineer's estimate. The, the stormwater fund is, is capable of funding that additional overage. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We'll call roll then.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We're down to second resolution there.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Timber Creek Pedestrian Bridge Reconstruction Project, $349,910.80.
Bill for approval, your honor?
Second.
Again, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director, maybe to, to beat any councilor's questions, this bid was favorable, just shy of $350,000. Our engineer's estimate was on the order of $481,000. This one is a success of our recent bids, and would recommend the council accept the bid and authorize the award of contract.
Any further questions? Still a lot of money for a bridge, though. If there's no questions, call roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Resolution carried.
Resolution 3.
Resolution rejecting all bids for the 2020 Street Maintenance Project.
Move for approval, your honor?
Justin Nichol, Public Works Director, this resolution is recommending the city council reject the bids we received for 2020 Street Maintenance. Our engineer's estimate was $412,000. We received two bids, one from Farner in Dubuque for roughly $890,000, and one from Midwest Coatings on the western border for $958,000. We discussed with both contractors after opening the bids, why the, the large difference between what we estimated and what they quoted. Both said that the timing was not very good, because of the crack sealing, the crack leveling, they prefer to do that in the spring or fall. In the summer, that material tends to stay hot, and they have to keep the road closed and, and perform additional measures to make sure that, that tar, that rubber, asphalt and molding doesn't stick to people's tires, stick to people's cars as they drive over it. We did not receive a bid from our local con, well, our semi-local contractor, DenCo, they're located in Tamaa, Toledo. Our current plan for this project would be to, to, probably not bid, again, with the intent of constructing in 2020. We're going to get on to some other discussion about the FEMA project. We'd like to reserve street maintenance funds for that FEMA project, and we'll try again for street maintenance, probably in the fall or winter, with the hopes of constructing in the early construction season, spring of 2021.
So we're going to vote to accept this rejection, correct? Any other questions?
Your honor?
Yep.
Justin, since we're rejecting this bid, what's it do to you and your, the street staff to repair some of the most needed repairs that were in this bid package?
Well, so we don't, we don't have the staff or the equipment to do the crack leveling and the crack sealing that's required, that's why we sent this out for, for bid to contractors. It's, it's obviously a disappointment, it'll be another year before we can get these cracks sealed, but at the same time, we have the, we have plenty of issues all over town. In discussing with Jay Cook and with Rick Legg, we feel the best use of our funds would be on the next item, to, to go ahead and put that into our bid alternate for the northeast FEMA Street Repair Project, and, and try again for street maintenance, like I said, with the intent of working that in in early construction season 2021.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, are some of these leveling issues so bad, though, that you need to get out there and do some temporary patches this year, because this, this bid's failing?
Yeah, I'm not sure I would use the word failing. Yeah, we, we certainly do have some, some Band-Aid remedies that we can certainly use on some of these, should there be real problems, but the majority of the, of the scope of the 2020 Street Maintenance Project was to go seal- to go seal, uh, streets that have been, uh, repaired within the last decade to protect our, uh, protect our investment from the last decade. Um, I don't wanna give the guarantee that we won't see any additional problems, but I would say the, the likelihood and the risk is small, um, for having severe problems by not, uh, performing this work in 2020.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Call for roll then?
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Hold on, we had one, though. Oh, call roll, please, yeah.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill? Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution Four.
Resolution, Resolution Accepting Bid and Authorizing the Award of Contract for the Northeast FEMA Street Repair Project, 100, or $1,546,167.40 to construct.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor?
Uh, questions? Want Justin to answer any questions or give us an update?
If I may, Your Honor? Um, Justin, is there a map of these streets? I'm, I know I, I don't know, I can't speak for all the council members. Um, is there a map on the website that shows exactly what streets are impacted by this so people know their street's gonna be getting fixed?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a map on the website currently, but, uh, we can certainly, uh, get that placed here tomorrow or certainly in the next week. Uh, so the, the scope of these, uh, these streets to be repaired would be Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, and Seventh Avenue, um, from east, or from west to east, uh, and then, um, Woodley, uh, Bromley, and, uh, um, partially on State Street, and, um, one more street as well, uh, which I'm failing to remember at the moment. Uh, the street north of Bromley, which I can't think of at the moment.
Woodbury.
Woodbury. Woodbury Street?
Woodbury, thank you. And yes, we can certainly get a map up on the, uh, website. For citizens, they will get notice from the contractor in the form of a door hanger, um, that, uh, construction will be beginning.
Thanks, Justin, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Moving on to the next resolution.
Resolution approving a grant agreement with Joel Botello for exterior wall repairs at 27 North Center Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Uh, who would, uh, who would discuss this? You?
Yeah. Um, this is an item that, uh, I'd kinda been keeping you posted on. Um, the, the money that we, um, have been approved to borrow from the Iowa Economic Development Authority is money that we are granting out for, for the shared walls. Um, this is a program we're not widely advertising because it's only a very select, uh, population that is eligible for this. Um, 20th, 27 North Center Street does have an exposed wall with more to come, um, and there's going to be some construction that'll be covering up part of that wall. So, um, Joel and his brother Antonio, who are both on the agreement, are both owners of the property, um, uh, they have signed the agreement, and, um, we are granting up to $30,000, uh, knowing that's a little bit more than what their estimate is from their contractor, but there's still some demolition that could occur, which could change their estimates. So, um, these are some very hands-on, um, agreements. Uh, there's two more that I should have coming up here for the last meeting in May, just to keep work moving as well. Um, so, but these are pretty hands-on, and so that's where, uh, with demolition yet to occur, we wanna not hold somebody up on our meeting schedule, um, and proceed with the quotes that they've presented, um, but know that we might have some contract amendments that would come back if something were to change.
Is that, is that the north wall right over here across the street?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Good, Your Honor. Uh, Jessica, that, this is actually good news for all of us, correct? I mean, 'cause originally you said that only probably four properties would get, um, access to this grant money. It, it, you know, the $500,000 divided by four, so this coming in so low, this is actually, opens door for some others, correct?
So we, we're, we're going to have one project that is significantly larger than the others, um, and, uh, on Main Street, um, uh, I believe we will anyways, I haven't, you know, started conversations there. And so that's where the, the less that these come in, uh, gives us a greater possibility of being able to fund more than four or being able to do more support for that really big project.
And then also, on the bigger projects, I, I'm not, I, I have to plead ignorance, I don't know how the facade grants are written. Can they be coupled with these on the shared wall?
They, they can. And so, um, luckily, here for, um, the Botellos, uh, their, their, um, repair requests came in at a level that was, um, less than what I had sort of penciled in initially in our budget, um, as, as I was looking at projects. And so, we are proposing here to 100% fund their repair. Um, ultimately, they're, they're a barber shop, and they've been closed since mid-March. And so, uh, the fact that they're willing to be partners in moving forward on this project at a time where they have no income coming in, um, has been a, a pleasant surprise and, and one that we wanna work with them, um, to do. So, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll keep moving forward on things, but I think we'll, we'll hopefully be able to, to get some other projects funded, um, at, you know, as they come up. I think the biggest thing on this is a, a willingness of an owner to move forward with the project because they still have to have the agreement with the contractor. The city is not involved in that. So, we're, we're moving forward.
And have we gotten any word yet from the state if this is forgivable or not yet?
So as long as we meet the terms of the loan agreement, which was, uh, executed back on, um, April, um, I think our first meeting in April, um, as long as we meet those terms, then it will be forgivable. So, uh, this contract has been set up in a way that will, will meet those terms.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, next resolution, please.
Resolution adopting a multi-hazard emergency operations plan and emergency support functions.
Assistant here has just gone, done it.
Move to approve, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor?
Yes, um, so this is delayed in, in getting to you, um, but I hope you can see that there is a lot of work that went into this by, uh, every, every, uh, department, um, has been part of this. And so, um, this is just really the first step, and I'm not gonna profess that everything is perfect right now. Um, certainly, there are some formatting issues, which I couldn't get to on, on some of them, but we'll leave that for a later date. But, but ultimately, here, um, this really is a big step for us in moving forward and putting forth a, a plan, um, that really puts out the roles and responsibilities of each department in a disaster and, um, really breaks things down into these different support functions, um, and basically, you know, describes kind of what, what could happen in each of these support functions as well. So, I hope you all were able to read it. There is a little section about roles and responsibilities in the emergency operations plan, which does talk about elected officials and, um, that, uh, that you are understanding of what, what your role is in a disaster as well.
Your Honor? Um, and requirement for you, by you, is every year, it will be revised?
Well, we'll be reviewing it. Um, you know, that's the, the, I can't say that each one of these things will be reviewed annually, um, but ultimately, our goal is to do one exercise of our plan each year, and I think that's where we'll be able to tell if it's working the way we want it to or where we might need to make some revisions to any of the ESFs or to our plan specifically. So.